Call this meeting to order. Notice of a regular meeting on June ninth, twenty twenty five at five P M. City Council Chamber, thirty nine forty seven Lincoln Avenue, Groves, Texas. You'd all rise for the prayer and pledge, please?
Let's pray. Lord God, we thank you for all your many blessings. We thank you for a country that we can live in and not have to worry about being physically first to you. Lord God, we come to you this evening and we ask that you give us your spirit and dwelling in us so that we might make the right decisions this evening. Lord God, please be with us and help us to be more like the sun in your day. We ask these things in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the authority from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
Thank you for that, sir. My honor. Item four, roll call, city clerks.
Mayor Born.
Here.
Mayor Proton Canitas. House Member McAdams.
Here.
House Member Holmes.
Here.
House Member Gay.
Like welcome everybody to tonight's meetings. Item six, reports.
No, sir.
All right. Item seven, any citizen comments?
I'll just start it.
Name and address, please.
My name is Dawn Buffington. I live at thirty seven twenty nine Franklin Avenue. And I'm here kind of, y'all heard from me at the last public hearing meeting. I have some notes. Can I give it to y'all? Do y'all want a copy of what I'm gonna read?
Yes, ma'am, please.
And there's some signatures. If y'all just pass it down. We were here at the la- I was here at the last public hearing for about the apartments. And I know there were some concerns that only one person stood up and spoke up. That was me. But that's because there were five people here from the neighborhood, but only, nobody knew when to stand up or speak. They heard the two hundred feet away and didn't know what that meant or anything. So they didn't know what to say. So since then, I've talked to them. And I found out tonight, tonight y'all are gonna decide on it. So I did a door-to-door poll on Franklin Street, Boyd Street, and Lay Street. Cause I got the names off the, off the website of who all got the letters about the apartments and how it might affect our neighborhood. And so to keep my mind straight, I'll just read y'all what they signed. You've got the letter and the signature. We are writing to express our strong opposition to the proposed housing development in our neighborhoods. While we understand the need for housing in our city, we believe that this project would have a detrimental impact on our community. First and foremost, the proposed development is simply too large for our area. The increase in population density would put a strain on our already overburdened infrastructure, leading to increased traffic congestion, noise collusion, and strain on our public services. The type of housing being proposed is simply not in keeping with the character of our neighborhood. This development would bring in many residents, which could lead to increased crime rates and other negative social effects. We are deeply concerned about the impact this development would have on property values in the area. The influx of residents could result in a decline in our property values, making it difficult for current residents to sell their homes and move elsewhere. Other concerns, we have heard that the property will be built up by feet. And that we're concerned that this will cause flooding, especially on front end, which has never flooded. It's not in a flood zone. I'm not sure about Boyd later, Lay or Terrell. We are also wondering if we have data that will support the need for a complex this big. Did we do a needs assess? Did y'all do a needs assessment or anything? And I wanted to know what the occupancy rates of the other complexes in Groves are. Again, and are they HUD apartments? Cause we're, we have a concern that these apartments will turn into HUD, even though their design is luxury. We believe that the residents will rent out these luxury apartments and they will not want their children going to keep out those schools. Cause on that side of the road, you go to Fort Doc or not Fort Nature's Groves. And another concern was where are they gonna park? If you figure two cars per apartment, that's four hundred plus cars. The flyer we were handing out at the last meeting showed windows in the back of the apartments. And these windows will be overlooking many backyards, so they will lose their privacy in these backyards. Eight to ten foot fence will not be tall enough to keep their privacy. We believe our property values will decrease with this large of a development. We believe crime will go up. Traffic, we've told there's one entrance and one exit. We believe that there's a little private street that goes by the ambulance place there. We believe they would use that as a shortcut to go through down Franklin or go to Boyd the other way. They'll be making, it'll be more traffic. Trying to get along harder to the shopping areas. And we believe our taxes will increase. We're not against a development going up there. We just don't want something that big. It's too big for this area. And I think that's, y'all have anything? My neighbors are here supporting me.
We all, we all support her.
And they're all here. They came for the meeting. Cause ninety percent of the people on that list did not understand what the apartment complex meant. They did not know where, and I had to show them the flyer and everything when I went door-to-door. I was showing them and I, everything I got off the website, I educated them on it. They said, no, you don't want this because they didn't real, they thought it was gonna be a VA home or a nursing home or something like to that, that level. And they were all for something like that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
Yeah, the citizen comments. Name, name and address, please.
Maddie Bearden, can you come in? Maddie Bearden, thirty seven oh one Franklin Avenue. I just wanna say, I'm one of the people who didn't understand at first what this was about. And I also wanna say, I realize that the apartments are being advertised as luxury apartments. And I don't believe that this area has the income base to support that for any extended period of time. Farmland Park started out as luxury apartments and they are now section eight. Stone Gate is the highest crime area because the Avery Trace Apartments, which used to be Land Flider, were luxury apartments and now they're section eight. I don't believe this area has the income base to support luxury apartments of this scope in this area. And I believe that inevitably, in order to fill the apartments, the only choice the builders will have or the owners will have is to apply to the government to make them section eight. I live on the opposite side of Franklin, that front of the houses that back that property. But I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see my neighborhood turn into what's happened to Avery Trace or what's happened to Stone Gate out there. You can't walk around in broad daylight for fear of being shot. It's, there's not even, people are not even waiting till dark. They're being shot and stabbed and whatever in broad daylight. And that's not why I came to this neighborhood. I came to this neighborhood because it was nice and peaceful and quiet. And my home is paid for. I don't wanna move. But I don't wanna live in the middle of crime central.
Any other citizen comments? Name and address, sir.
Bill Harchi, forty one oh five Roosevelt. I retired two thousand and ten. And at that time I bought a golf cart. And have been dri- driving it ever since, even though the regulations are not suitable for it. But that's only recreation a lot of the older people in this town have. You know, they took away the golf, uh, golf course, which I didn't play golf, so we'll get away from that. But we ride around, look at the new houses being built and visit our grandkids and everything else, go to Dairy Queen. So we just need y'all to adopt either the state laws or Fort Nature's laws or Neyland laws on the golf carts, so we can drive them legally. The kids driving them underage, they need to be ticketed or their parents, whichever. It doesn't matter to us. But for us legal people, let us drive. And I've got all the regs for the state for Fort Nature's and Neyland, if you want, which you can get them off the internet also. So that's it.
Thanks, sir. Any other citizen comments?
Cherry Allen, forty five thirty five Roosevelt Avenue. I'm concerned too about the golf cart issue. I'm seventy-seven, my wife's eighty-two. We use my golf cart to go to the store, grocery store. And I do understand the reasoning why y'all adopted the state laws, which we haven't been enforcing in the past. But, and I'm, I know that you're concerned about the safety. If, you know what, it needs to be licensed adults to drive these golf carts. And the golf carts need to be safe. My golf cart has seat belts. It has two orange placards. It has panoramic mirrors. It's got blinkers. It's got stop lights. It's got everything that you could imagine. It's forced to make it safe for my life and I, but you know, we have, we do have children and I'm very concerned about that, that are driving each time, especially during the summertime. Hey, we need to, we need to ticket them, ticket their, their parents. I can tell you as a parent myself, five children, that if I had got the ticket for my child, I would have turned around and it would have stopped immediately. So I'd like for y'all to consider, like I said, to at least put some regulations on driving the golf cart. If, if you do deem to allow those to be, you're up here in the Groves. And like I said, I'm concerned about, I almost hit somebody the other day. There, and I don't know what they're called, or they're little mini motor scooters about that tall. And, and I guarantee you that kid was doing forty miles an hour and with no helmet. And I thought, man, you get hit, you're dead. And you know, that needs to stop. And I don't know how y'all feel about electric bicycles, but they travel twenty-seven miles an hour. And it's the same thing. They ride without helmets. And they have, they run stop signs. They don't stop. And, and I don't know what you call it, any of those little, it used to be a scooter. We, we do with our, our, well now they got them electric, you know? And it's just a little bit of old thing with two four-inch wheels. Well, there needs to be a law. I mean, you know, for the safety of our children. But, and like I said, we that do drive vehicles from time to time. Like I said, I almost hit one the other day that I didn't see them. They went by so fast. But anyway, I'd like for you to consider at least maybe adapting the state law a little different for the city of Groves as Neyland and Fort Doctor and Fort Nature has done. Thank you.
Any other citizen comments?
My name is Marlon Carter. I live at forty-nine forty-eight Bel Air. We bought our golf cart about a year ago. Our golf cart has lights, horn, brake lights, everything that pretty much the car does. The only thing it doesn't have is a license plate. But we take our two children, a nine-year-old and a five-year-old on it and make sure they're seatbelted and make sure they're with us all the time. There are no time where they allow us to touch without us. But I would like to see y'all implement a regulation on it because they, we do take it for joyous intimacy with friends and family. It is, it is getaway for escape. We take his market basket, take it a little small, the water park slash park. But I don't, I don't wanna just take that joy for giveaway. They, they enjoy that relaxation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Yes, sir. My name is Mark Crouch. I live at thirty-one forty-eight Canal Avenue, Groves, Texas. I have been driving mine since twenty eighty-seven, that I have a three-wheel, easy-go golf cart. For four years, I've had liability insurance from Progressive. Me and my dog have been driving around for about a couple of years and then finally at the next couple of years after that, I would say with lights, mirrors, reflectors and everything else. And all we do is just ride around, go to the park, go to whenever the festival is around and just putt around and things like that. Currently, right now, it's sitting in a shed because right now with the way the organs was last week or last month, I wasn't quite sure whether to continue working on it or to what it will be going about. But if it does, I, like I said, I'm sixty-two, will be going until sixty-three. And do everything. And some people do sometimes say, you know, we're not supposed to be on the road, but I stay far right on two-lane roads or even on one lane of, even around the roads of the streets. And try to stay away from hard flow traffic. Don't really go down hard flow traffic because it's unsafe. But if there was a way or places, and also too, if that's taken away from us, then we would have to have, I have a U cycle. But from the road conditions, potholes. My street, thirty-second street, we just filled up with asphalt every time. But the way how they do it and the way how I used to do it whenever I worked at St. Mary's is that you put oil tar down first, then asphalt. Because if they, they just fill it up, it's like, you know, a couple of days later, it rains and cars go over it. Eighteen-wheelers, trucks or dump trucks. I have one that lives down my street. And it just makes potholes bigger and bigger. So I just wanted to let, let y'all know that. I tried to say something last week, but I couldn't get through because there were just pretty crowded people here last time. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
My name's Johnny Hunt, sixty-four fifty-four Madison, in Groves. I'm kinda in the same boat as one of these other gentlemen in here. You know, bought a golf cart, but you drive it around town, had no problems, no issues. It would have a lot of eleven and twelve and thirteen-year-olds. I have a fifteen-year-old grandson. I wanted to drive it. I said, nope. So you get your driver's license, you cannot drive it. Will not allow any of my grandkids to drive it. I have five grandkids that love to ride around my golf cart. That love to ride around on my golf cart. Just like these other gentlemen back here. I have seat belts, blinkers. I have license plates. It's fully insured, everything. It's just like a very regular vehicle, only it's a golf cart. It only does twenty-seven miles an hour. Never taken it on the highway, never been on any other street besides thirty-five mile an hour or less. The state of Texas allows us to drive it on thirty-five mile an hour or less highways, roads, streets. I think the city of Groves should adopt that policy also.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Last call, citizen comments. Okay, we'll move on. Item number eight. Delivering act to approve the minutes of the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five city council meeting.
Make a motion with deliberate act to approve the minutes of the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. Second emotion.
Motion, second, to deliberate an act and to approve the minutes of the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. Got any questions? No questions. We'll vote on the motion. Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item nine, delivering an act to approve the minutes of the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five joint public hearing.
I make the motion with deliberate an act to approve the minutes of the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five joint public hearings.
Motion and second, to deliberate an act to approve the minutes of the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five joint public hearing. Got any questions? No questions. We'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item ten, receive the minutes of the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five planning and zoning meeting. They're in the packet. And then item number eleven, we'll receive the minutes of the June second, twenty twenty-five planning and zoning meeting. Are also in the packet. Item number twelve, hear the introduction and swearing in of the new deputy marshal, marshal.
Mayor and council, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to introduce, yeah, come on up here.
Yeah.
There he is. I was hoping he was here. I looked back, didn't see him. I said, it's gonna look really awkward. I really appreciate you this opportunity. I'm glad a lot of folks are here also to get to know Deputy John Becerra Silva. He has joined our department back in January. He actually took his T cole a bit later than the other deputy that we introduced the two weeks ago. I mean, wasn't quite right, so we're super glad and very, very excited to have him here. I'd just like to read a little bio real quickly to introduce him. He joins our department with a strong commitment to service and a deep appreciation for community. He's actually moved here from New York. He relocated to Fort Arthur at age twelve and has called the area home ever since. He and his family actually moved to Groves back in twenty twenty-two. And he's driven by a desire to serve with integrity. He views his journey in the law enforcement as one of the greatest achievements of lifetime. He approaches his profession with humility, a willingness to take on challenges and an eagerness to grow both personally and professionally. He is a particularly passionate about one day pursuing a career with the FBI focusing on crimes against individuals, crimes against persons. Outside of work, John values family above all else. He enjoys spending quality time with his loved ones. He also prioritizes health and wellness and regular workouts and outdoor activities. He's grateful for the opportunity to be here. And he's actually provided a statement that I'll read to you all. He says this, "I believe this career is where I'm meant to be with God's guidance. I plan to grow through every opportunity, face every challenge with purpose and give back to the community that's brought so much joy to me and my family." So as part of this introduction, I'm gonna have him, if you would, raise your hand and take the oath of office for a deputy marshal here in Groves. Repeat after me. I say Jim.
I, John Silva.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of deputy marshal.
Of the office of deputy marshal.
For the city of Groves.
For the city of Groves.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And we believe you when you take that oath. We're very, very excited for your future. And thank you for being committed to all of the.
Thank you all.
Congratulations and welcome to the team. Item number thirteen, delivering an act on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten, amending the code of ordinances, chapter twenty-five, traffic to add. Item nine, temporary golf cart ordinance.
I make a motion with deliberate an act on ordinance twenty-five dash ten, amending code of ordinances, chapter twenty-five, traffic to add article nine, temporary golf cart ordinance.
I'll say.
Have a motion and second to deliberate an act on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten, amending the code of ordinances, chapter twenty-five, traffic to add article nine, temporary golf cart ordinance. On to questions. And I'm gonna start, and I'm gonna ask Marshall to correct me if I'm wrong, because we're gonna do a little history first. Just so everyone's clear. Groves has never had a golf cart ordinance allowing or prohibiting, correct?
This is correct.
Only the state law that prohibited them was intact, correct?
Yes, sir.
There was an amendment, or there was an asterisk that said, if you had a golf course, you could ride them to and from within two miles, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now that we don't have a golf course, it was time to go back to the law. So there was an, there was an ordinance needed in order to allow this, correct?
As soon as the golf course closed, he said.
But it was never done.
No, sir.
And so now you're here today to get something to see where we can go with it.
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. So now we'll go on to the rest of it. It was nor, never the intention or the desire of this council to outlaw golf carts in the city of Groves. It was our intention to have this ordinance written up so that we could allow the golf carts in Groves, under special provisions. So we're gonna talk about it, let everybody get their Ps and Qs, and hopefully we'll vote on it. So now on to the rest of the questions. Mr. Holmes, I believe you, or Councilmember Holmes, I believe you had some.
Marshall, thank you for your time today. I have this, this review in our page one here.
There's a whole bunch of them.
There are plenty of pages. Just looking at page twenty-nine.
Yes, sir.
So essentially this ordinance gives provisions for owners to operate certain vehicles on our streets. I'm just looking to enforcement things here, looking at line one sixty-five.
Yes, sir.
So law enforcement, all the officers of the city are authorized to stop and inspect any vehicle suspected of violating the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about license plate, liability insurance, licensed driver. Those, you know, those being three of the big things for the ordinance.
Correct. So for section B, I mean, it would, it would apply to any potential suspected violation inside this one.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. But that was my main question. I just, you know, wanna make sure the two guys have the ability to enforce and monitor, sort of follow those, you know, if we decide to pass this ordinance on.
Yes, sir.
You've done a, done a pretty good job, I believe, with the communication between some other people here as well, defining what and what isn't prohibited or allowed or prohibited. But along with everything that is allowed.
Yes, sir.
All traffic, codes, ordinances, laws, everything that is in place to be a driver is gonna have to be followed, correct?
Yes, sir, if it passes as it is.
So let's say my golf cart doesn't have blinkers. And I am traveling and I make a turn. If I don't signal, am I in violation?
If you signal with your arms, you're great. If you don't signal at any time, there would be a potential violation.
Okay. The license plate can be obtained through the county tax praiser's office?
That's correct. Have to assess your collectors.
Have to assess your collector. Sorry. And the liability insurance, I'm sure most people already have that anyway.
Correct. Of course, with that, you have the ability to meet the minimums required by the state of Texas or to exceed the level you're comfortable.
The thought process into getting this ordinance put together as quickly as it was, was to to hear everyone that was concerned with not being able to enjoy a piece of equipment that they purchased. At a later time, we can look at potentially adding to it, subtracting to it, whatever. I feel like I've done a pretty good job, especially on the temporary thing. Everything that's in this can be done within a day. And then they're back on the roads with licensed drivers following all the rules.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so what I'm reading and understanding and just trying to go through it, it's not only for golf carts, which for UTVs and R O Vs, which one?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So we see a lot today, you know, this from the enforcement perspective, the safety perspective, our, our police department here in Groves. We've seen golf carts. We've certainly seen some mini bikes and things of that nature. One thing that we have seen some confusion on is what is a UTV? And, you know, this thing I'm riding has more safety features than a golf cart. So why can't I operate this on a road already? Um, and so for, for specifically the description of a UTV and what we've had to try to define in this ordinance particularly. That's kind of what you see, uh, you know, a lot of sporting events when you're watching, let's say, professional sports. You see somebody injured, you see a cart. Uh, it's a side by side, you see two seats, side by side, it's not straddling, it's like a bench with a cargo area on the back. Those actually have a built-in uh speed limit, if you will, not to exceed a certain speed. Uh, and those do have seat belts and safety features. Um, so we wanted to explore, hey, look, we, we are seeing a lot of these right now. Let's see about, uh, maybe including that in that ordinance.
So that's a UTV.
That's a UTV. So, and utility tasked vehicles, what that, what that stands for. And we do have some uh vehicles to uh, to display on the, on the power pole here. So with ROVs, ROV stands for a recreational off-highway vehicle. And it varies a lot more than uh something like a UTV with with a utility task force's primary purpose is to do work, you know, whether that's loading a bunch of equipment and moving it to another location, whether that's following pipelines or utility lines or something like that. That's kind of its primary function in its establishment manufacturing. For an ROV, it can vary in a lot of different ways as well, off-road trails, beaches, things of that nature. But when you look at a contraption like this one here, uh listed on the, uh, on the display. It was really similar, so side by side, you know, it's, it does have some storage in the back, but it has all the safety features. But again, folks would say, well, look, this, this got more features and safety mechanisms than my golf cart is. Why wouldn't I be able to ride something like this? And so we explored that and we wanted to define those, list them here, and then uh apply some other sections that would still make them safe and appropriate. Like restricting who can drive and restricting how you ride in them. If a seat has a seatbelt, you're required to utilize that seatbelt. Uh, people can't sit in each other's laps and sit in the seat as the manufacturer's designed it. Uh, so that's the, that's the difference between those UTVs and ROVs. ROVs are designed for off-road use. Um, and these particularly do not have a speedometer that gauges or or limits its speed. Obviously, it'll have a maximum, but these could invariably speed down our streets.
Okay, so golf carts, UTVs and ROVs. Will be.
Under this ordinance has. Correct, correct.
Okay, and so that counts out, many bikes counts out, E-bikes.
Yes, sir. If you look specifically at section twenty five, two oh five, that starts on line eighty six. I'm sorry, I keep hearing this microphone coming out. Do you want to still hear me back there? That's on page twenty seven of the printout itself. Starting at line eighty six.
There we have it. I'll expect you to read it.
That's okay, but, yeah, that way everyone can see it also.
Just trying to get everybody.
Yes, sir. The last sentence of that section uh defines what's not uh included in the ordinance.
Alright, so uh requirements would be driver's license, license plate, insurance, uh compliance with traffic laws, lighting for vehicles, uh passenger limit for whatever they're manufactured to carry.
Yes, sir.
Uh, seatbelts, intersection crossing, roadway, pretty much of the rest of it is conserving every day law.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's go with, let's make sure the uh there was restrictions for the, the E-bikes. Uh, that were in the previous one we talked about.
Oh, okay.
Uh, that were the state rules. Uh, class one and two was no age restriction and class three was, uh, I believe fifteen years and older.
And.
With a helmet.
Helmet, that's correct. And those are established elsewhere.
It's not addressed in here.
Correct.
Uh, but what is being addressed is many bikes.
Correct.
Many bikes, there are bikes, three-wheelers and four-wheelers.
That's correct.
Don't do it.
Do not do it. Say that one more time.
Following the rule.
E-bikes, yes, sir. Those, those are different states, states you allows for those. Under the, it basically they follow the same requirements of the bikes to rider. Um, say for what the, the mayor just described in class.
And provided this, unfortunately, and provided this is voted through today, does this go into effect immediately or are there very strict?
I certainly wouldn't wanna speak for, for you folks. Um, with the way that it is written, if we saw unsafe behavior, we'd be able to address it right away. And that's the last thing that I would wanna limit it this time.
Sure.
You know, obviously with our ticket riders.
I'm always trying to get every question.
I completely understand that I'm, and I'm more than happy to answer any of these questions that you do have. Um, there will be some adjustments that we'll need to do in our system. You know, there will be statistics. It's not starting from being now that this is legal. How many uh violations are we having? If there are reps, which the ordinance requires that you do report, where are they happening and how often? So there'll be a few things that our, our computer systems and software will need to utilize to track that data so that we have good feedback to give you folks uh when we explore a more complete solution.
Uh, if this is passed tonight, uh you're saying there, there will be somewhat of a grace period for compliance as far as the regulatory rules, but not the safety part of it. And then along with that, uh, if this was to be passed, uh, I would say that we make sure that this is posted and so that everyone has an opportunity to see it. Website, uh wherever.
Maybe.
Facebook. I mean, I'm not gonna do it, but Facebook, someone else can post it. Uh, YouTube, if y'all wish, uh, it doesn't matter. Uh, wherever you get your news from, uh, would be a good place to make this available to everyone.
Um, we're gonna be coming back to it after publication.
Correct.
What is that? It would, it would be Thursday.
Thursday. Very good.
Two more days.
Marshal, I just wanted to highlight, uh, as far as operational requirements, um, many citizens are talking about what safety gear they have on theirs. This ordinance has a requirement for lighting when it's operated at night.
Correct.
That's the headlights, the taillights, side reflector, rearview mirror, and a slow-moving vehicle in them, so. If you have that piece of equipment, it's operated at night, it needs that gear. I mean, is that the way I understand this?
That's how it's written here, under lighting specifically.
After sunset.
I would certainly argue that, um, that it's maybe an adjustment that is needed as we look through this. Um, if the only thing that is uh documenting what equipment should be mandated uh day or night, I think the slow-moving vehicle uh icon should still be posted on the back of that vehicle. Uh, I would still recommend a rearview mirror also be utilized outside of just nighttime hours. Uh, when it comes to headlamps, taillamps, uh, those wouldn't necessarily be required unless the, you know, evening hours come about. But reflectors, obviously, at any time of the day are, are beneficial.
Um, I believe wording can be adjusted further down the summer.
Would be the, the way to go.
But I think the way it is right now, it can be applied.
Yes, sir.
Generally.
Yeah. Hope that is your question.
Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure we, we have that specific to sunset so that, you know, someone's not invested a lot of money in the vehicle right now.
Yes, sir. As written, it applies only to number five per access.
Any other questions? No other questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Councilmember Holmes?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Well, I've been waiting now for them to give me all ten.
Item fourteen, deliberate an act on ordinance twenty twenty five dash eleven, authorizing the specific use permit for apartments at fifty-five thirty ninth street.
Make a motion we deliberate an act on ordinance twenty twenty five dash eleven.
Second that motion.
Have a motion and a second, deliberate an act on ordinance twenty twenty five dash eleven, authorizing a specific use permit for apartments at fifty-five thirty ninth street. On the question. Mister Smith? Hey, look, we can, we can utilize, uh, unfortunately, Ray's not here tonight, so we can utilize her area, so we don't have to block anybody's. Well. I didn't say he was thinking about it before we got there.
I don't know if some of y'all went here last week. I have these pamphlets. Do any of y'all want some of those?
Uh, I'll get started. Mister, uh, Lakui with the planning and zoning, uh. Has, has Mister Smith, uh, satisfied all requirements of the planning and zoning at this time?
Uh, yes, sir. We had a meeting last Monday night with Mister Smith and his, his manager, his engineer showed up at his site plan. We discussed many, many issues of according to ordinance and even beyond ordinance, brain space, parking, fire protection, utility issues, fencing, traffic flow. Some of them, that, that's not a total list. The only question unanswered was the uh section ten dash nine oh three of the ordinance, which was uh the footprint of the buildings cannot uh exceed thirty percent of the acreage of the plot. Uh, they didn't have an answer at that meeting, but the next day Mister Mitchell emailed Don Trausen, the building inspector, with a figure to show that, that comes in at twenty-eight percent, which is obviously below the thirty percent threshold. And that's the only issue that the planning and zoning had, so uh that question, that answer.
Okay, thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mister Monk, um, I believe, uh, let's see, I have a question for you. Oh, uh, this being a specific use permit, uh, being that this is for a multifamily dwelling, uh, is this still gonna be required to be renewed yearly?
This is not year.
This one is not year.
Correct.
This is a one-time specific use. It does not, it does not follow the same as some of the other ones we have that are yearly. Okay. Uh, Mister Smith, I know that your, your intent is to have luxury apartments. I've heard some of the concerns that have been brought up. Uh, that has also been some of the concerns of the council as well. Um, Mister Monk, we kinda asked you to see if there were any provisions that we could safety ourself. Have you found anything that we would be able to do?
We talked about the restrictions with Mister Smith's counsel, potentially restricting Miss Hud's situation for the city. And, um, ultimately, Mister Smith's counsel was concerned about the potential liability associated with discrimination for that and was opposed to it, but we did look at that issue with, with his counsel.
Okay. Short answer note?
Correct.
They're not speaking into, loud enough for us to hear. For me to hear anything.
Okay.
May have been my mic, I'm sorry. I'll shake Justin there. So ultimately, the answer is, we did explore this idea of restricting for section eight housing and there was concerns about liability from the property owner and their counsel, and we felt we could not go that direction for the city.
Okay, thank you. Forgot anything? Uh, I had Mister Lamar, Mister Osley and uh city manager Mister Cruz go through some numbers for us. The two thousand sixteen J-CAD uh annual income for that property was six thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars a year. It has since dropped to a whopping seventeen hundred and thirty-four dollars a year. With estimated value, uh, with the developer estimate, the city estimates for everything, trash, sales tax and everything. This project, it has a potential of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of income for this city. Uh, so now a little bit of a history. Uh, since before I got on this council in twenty eighteen, uh, one of the main concerns of this city was, what are we gonna do with the old hospital? And the answer has always been, the city does not own the hospital. We can't do anything with it. We also do not have the money to tear it down, to be forced to do anything with it. Before the hospital, it was the bank, or the First Bank and Trust Building. Again, city didn't own it. We couldn't do it. We couldn't tear it down. Now, in a time when our city needs financial help to get where we wanna be, we have a developer that has come in, brought forth the money to tear it down and build something that gives substantial income to the city. We've heard from Public Works, and infrastructure will not be hindered. Uh, the traffic pattern, the engineer that worked on this project has worked on for the city projects as well. He understands that drainage cannot be forced to adjoining properties. And so until anybody else has any questions, I understand that there's people that live next to it that have concerns. Seventeen thousand people in the city want their streets fixed, and this is a good start to get there.
They don't live there. They don't live behind it.
Everybody's want it torn down, and they're willing to do it. I am for this project. I speak for it, and I hope the rest of my council is approving it or what.
Would you want it in here?
Sure.
Oh, you would like high-rise apartments.
They're not high-rise, they're two-story.
Both looking into your backyard.
I have a two-story house looking into my backyard that doesn't violate any city ordinances.
And if, if it's built, when the traffic does get worse and little kids on our street can't play out by the road because the traffic's bad, who do we complain to about that then?
Tech stock. Tech stock owns a few of roads.
Well, that's not, yeah. So we have no, we have no.
Could I ask something or am I out of order?
If you have a question.
Well, I don't live on Franklin, but I understand what they feel like, two-story, looking in your backyard or your home. Could it be designed where there was no windows that face out on the Franklin?
Believe it's a safety issue for second-story apartments. You can't just not have a window. You have to have an ingress point.
No windows other than by the front door. There are windows. So I, I don't know if I'm bringing up something that would just.
This is, this is a building code department. It's a building code department. For housing.
Mayor, I'd like to say that, you know, I've talked with the developers several times, um, about their intent for the property and, um, understanding that the other folks that, uh, you know, is joining in this venture. Um, they're already doing quality, thoughtful, other developments around the city. And, um, so my, my consideration with that, you know, where we go with this is based off of the whole history of those persons.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yeah, it's in our street that will start, street, you know, the cuts through the Franklin there, where the inlet's company do.
Believe the developers own that too. I believe the intent is to block it off, correct?
But the out, just going out on the freeway, people that want to go to Walmart or to HEB, they're gonna have to go all the way around. So they're gonna use that little short street and that's gonna be the traffic that come down our street. And the lady that owns that is not for this. I've lived at that house since nineteen seventy-two. And I'm not, I fear for myself because I, I live alone and I have backed up to be most. And putting up an acre fence is not gonna just secure it. People looking in my backyard. Because in the evening, after it starts hitting coolers, I sit out on my back porch and play with my cats. I don't feel like it's my right being, it's been taken away from me, my privacy. By them having windows or whatever that they can look into my backyard, that's my privacy that's been invaded, and I'm not for it. And I think that we should take consideration of us, what it's gonna be to us. I know you looking for the money, the three hundred and seventy-seven, whatever money that is. I understand that to fix roads or whatever, but we individuals, we pay our taxes as well. And it's not for us.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tara Ernie and I work.
Hi, my name is Tara Ernie, and I work with the developers that are working on this project. I hear what all of you are saying, so I live alone as well, so I understand. But I also understand how we've done business with our RV park as well. We screen our residents, we do background checks, we make sure we're bringing upstanding, hard-working citizens, teeth throats, because who cares about growths? That's why we've decided to bring that project to, to help grows grow, because it's growing where we want it to grow. There's gonna be thirty thousand people here in the next five years, is Grove's gonna get a piece of that pie to help improve your water, improve your streets, improve things for you, the city services that they offer? We, we're trying to help to be a part of that, I know sometimes growing hurts, but we will do everything we can to make this as comfortable as possible. Thank you.
Don't ask me. See, I understand what she's saying. She needs to move where we're there and have to experience it for us to be able to have that on top.
I live in Orange, and I have the same situation.
We can live, move where we are and experience what we are.
I understand.
You know, all of everybody on our street, it's not young teen, not everything. And with different, I say, we don't think that this is right for us, it's like the young. And I, I'm speaking for myself, but my daughter works for a major ambulance company, and this is going to impact them as well.
Has anything ever been considered on a lower scale, smaller scale?
We don't own the property.
Oh, I mean, for the building, how about for the building, can I ask the builder that question? Have you ever thought about making it half that size, one-story, why not?
It's not cost-effective.
Why did we not have the same, what goes on in our neighborhood?
It's not cost-effective.
Yeah, I did. Well, you can buy all our houses in, yeah, we wanna build every one of our homes.
Yeah.
I totally understand your concerns, but I have to agree with the mayor and Councilman Holmes. This city needs that income, our infrastructure, part of our infrastructure is failing, and we need that income. I'm just gonna be point-blank, I'm a little on line, we need.
But why should we have to stop?
Ma'am, I'm, I'm not trying to disagree with you by any means, but I will say that there are homes in Groves that have two-story homes next to them where windows overlook backyards, I understand that's not what you want. But there are homes in Groves that are like that. And I'm not trying to be crude or rude or inconsiderate, but the city needs.
I realize that you need the best to prepare this, this street to some fact, but we are the one that's gonna have to deal with whatever goes on in that apartment.
Our decision is gonna be based on what's best for the entire city. Seventeen thousand people. Yes, ma'am?
Pretty, spoken for already?
No.
You say?
No, ma'am.
Um, was there a marketing analysis done to determine that this would be financially feasible? And what potentially would happen if occupants had dropped below a certain percentage for an extended period of time?
Well, women wasn't older, you know, so I talked to government, they were, you know, so women wanted some money out for and everything.
So, what you're telling us, the citizens of Groves, is that you're willing to come out of your pocket to retain luxury apartments and not have government subsidy if occupants.
No, this would be nice part, the something, even where we have the working people, where they do.
Fire, fire, nice apartments, they have fireplaces, I don't have fireplaces in my house. And some of those apartments are bigger than my house, so they're still government housing. They started out as luxury apartments, people in this area cannot afford them. I've been a registered nurse for thirty-five years, thirty-five years, I can't afford sixteen hundred dollars a month. My house note was never that high. So my question is, what guarantee do the citizens of Groves have? That if occupants drops, we will not suddenly find ourselves living next door to government apartments?
Well, it's a big.
Yes.
Um, it's not, it's not gonna be. I shouldn't face everything, I don't know, Mr. Smith.
Sarah?
Ma'am, I understand your concern about the population falling off and going back to falling on to a housing. But that is not the projection for this growth in this area, it's not what we want for this, this apartment complex. And the owners make that decision. And they're not gonna do it, this is not the only apartment complex we're building, and they will not be the that has been said from start to finish, and the market is allowing it.
Uh, there's. Standing here is a matter of record?
There is.
Yeah, everything's being recorded, as you see.
There is two and three-bedroom houses in Groves right now that I know are for rent between fourteen and sixteen hundred dollars a month, and they're getting it all day, every day. That are not near as nice as things are gonna be.
I have grandchildren, and I have no desire for them to play outside across the street from uh, crime.
I know you're fearing the unknown, but I, I would ask you to have a little think.
Hey, what about the old T's elementary school lot over there, is that?
That is not on this agenda.
I was just curious.
Yeah, not gonna happen. Yes, ma'am?
Right now, I think I have to get my home from one sixty-one eighty. After this is built, nobody will buy my home. I promise you, I know, no one will buy my house, it's got that, I promise. And God forbid, I have nothing against this to me, nothing, but God forbid something happens to him two years, three years down, if they call somebody upstate, turn him away, you know?
The other owners are local as well.
Yes, everybody's local.
Everybody's local.
New York, California, we're out here, all over.
You told me last time over here, you're gonna come or find me with all the homeowners, we're still waiting on that meeting.
I gotta get it approved, harsh.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be built up very, so many inches, some.
That's the old hospital we're looking at for the last fifteen years.
Right.
Mayor, when drainage plans are designed for any kind of structure, uh, as you probably see on the storage buildings that we're working on in front of the Arby's art on the accessory. With, when you build up, the drainage plans underneath force you to put a drainage pond or pipe big enough to hold the water to keep from affecting any property around you. That is how the engineer designs those plans. So what we build up is not gonna affect your land because we contain it within our area. That's, that's the law, that's the way it has to be, that's.
The building code requires that any developer cannot shed more water onto the building's property more than what's already been shed, that's part of the plan review when they submit their construction budget.
And we've gotta go by brain calculations from Arby's, so I think we're covered, I think we're covered.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, we're covered.
They're still talking, hold on, okay, now, go ahead.
I've been, my, you know, Harvey, my, my home has never, well, they're building that, all this water's gonna, if, if we have a severe storm, that water's gonna drain on our street.
No, ma'am.
They, they just told you they have an engineering plan to get rid of the water based on Harvey waterfall.
Underneath, underneath all of this
Is our drain.
is drainage plan that we have calculated engineered numbers of how many gallons of water can be contained in the pipe, in the road, anywhere on this piece of property and not affect anything around it.
It's less than what the hospital was gonna be.
Yeah, but wouldn't it be another massive like Harvey?
Did you, did you flood during Harvey? Most of the hospital is concrete. So all they're gonna do is improve the drainage of the hospital, so if you didn't flood during Harvey, and they're gonna make it better. Since the reason, it's not gonna be worse the next time.
If we, we've had trouble with the drainage at the hospital because it has been kept up and gets all full of leaks and stuff, we've had to go out there and.
Mr. Smith wants to fix that.
Hold on there, sweetie, we're going.
If we did get water in our yard, we'd be getting water, if it's bad, we'll do that to our patio. Because it comes from the, the hospital, no drainage in that parking lot.
Has everything stopped up on, it hasn't been maintained?
We had parking area next to us, so we got all that drained off, so I hope that it gets improved.
It's gonna be improved, but we'll see.
If I could, I put my planning hat on, this property, as currently is, there's not enough highway frontage for this to be a viable uh, retail property, you've just got a very narrow uh, frontage there, so it's deep. It's not gonna be retail. There is no market for office park in this area, so you can't turn this into you know, one-story office park of some kind because the market's not gonna support it. So you say, okay, well, well, let's make it, uh, a single-family residential. You've got the, the, uh, two hospital buildings that are there that have asbestos. What Mr. Smith has in his development plan calls for half, I believe it's half a million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
And that's only because the owners have a, a, uh, one of their businesses is, is remediation, they can do it a whole lot cheaper than anybody else. But if another developer goes in there and has to remediate both of those buildings with asbestos, they're looking at easily a million-plus dollars in development costs, and it has to be factored into whatever, however many, uh, single-family houses can be put on that property. That alone will kill a fast-single-family project, in fact, Mr. Smith looked at doing initially.
I was trying to do it for the elderly, building housing, nothing but for fifty thousand bucks for the baby movers like me. The money wasn't there, you couldn't do it, I was trying so hard to do it, because I just felt that there's a need for it.
Been trying, trying to, I know.
And it was first. That's how, the only way anything you put there, didn't want to help out that, I mean, really, that's all we can do, nice park, luxury park, the people will live in, nice park, get it secured, being, being real nice, security twenty-four hours. Having a nice park.
And as the mayor said, the city doesn't have the money going there and forcing the issue and demolishing it. So what's sitting behind your rear fences running after homes is, uh, not only is it an eyesore, but there's criminal activity going on right there, right now, so when you're in your backyard in the spring with your cats, you don't know what's going on in those buildings out there, it's, it's not, it's, uh.
Those, I'll steer, never, that unit that's right there, there was a man standing on top of the roof there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know?
So right now, it, it, it's attracting two-legged or four-legged vermin, no-legged vermin, snakes.
I opened my back patio door, and there was a raccoon this big with his head, with this paw up on my door, it in my window.
Mr. Smith, in your, in your proposal, uh, I believe you, you said something about site security, is that?
Yes.
A full-time site security?
That's what we're playing.
Okay.
Cameras as well.
Everything's a bunch, much of it, we gotta figure out how to do that to them when they're growing because of their neighbors. That's what I'm hoping to.
Okay. Council, any other questions?
I have none.
Councilmember Holmes? All right. Being no other questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye, Councilmember Holmes?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Motion passes. Out of fifteen, deliberate and act on the June ninth, twenty twenty-five invoice list.
I made the motion, deliberate and act on the June ninth, twenty twenty-five, please, please.
No, it's this one, it's not, a sheet. I have a motion in a second to deliberate and act on the June ninth, twenty twenty-five invoice list. On to questions?
Mayor, Council, just four items.
Hold on a second. Please, please be, please be quiet.
Just four items on the list for tonight, the first one's, this is to Brentex Southwest for sodium hydroxide water plant, seven thousand six hundred thirty-four hundred ninety-one cents. Tracks, streets, construction, concrete and curb replacement at City Hall, eight thousand five hundred dollars. That's, uh, out here at the, uh, in the parking lot. Uh, Recove Services for a quarter dumpster pickup in May, ten thousand two hundred forty-five dollars and fifteen cents. And then South Tex Surveyors Engineering Services for the, uh, engineer working bottleneck, sewer bottleneck on Twenty Fifth Street, it's thirty-two thousand dollars and five, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars for a total of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and six cents.
Any questions? Is anybody here from the water, or is Lamar here? Oh.
Got Glenn here too.
Glenn's here. It just, oh, he's not here, no? He wasn't here. But I'm just curious if you had any idea how much the sodium hydroxide has gone up in the last five years?
No.
It's only been here like eight months.
But I find that.
I would be curious to answer, I'd be curious to see what the average cost increase of the chemicals we were required by is over the last five to ten years. Uh, other than that, I don't, I don't have any other questions.
I know there's fewer and far between for what friends are available as well.
Yeah. Uh, no other questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes aye. Councilmember Holmes?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item sixteen, Councilmember comments. Uh, I know most of them already left, but this is being recorded, so I'll go ahead and tell you that. Uh, this was not an easy decision for myself, or I would imagine anybody else on council. Matter of fact, my first, uh, instinct was to say absolutely not. Um, for fear of what had happened and, and, and why the ordinance for no multifamily was put in back in, I believe, two thousand five, two thousand six. Uh, but through my research and, and, and communicating with Mr. Smith and, and our city manager, um, we don't always get to make exciting decisions that everybody jumps for joy. But I believe this is one that was required, and it's gonna make some people mad, I understand that. But I believe it is for the betterment of the city, and I will continue to make hard decisions. And I know I'm gonna make people mad, and that's okay, because I think this was best. As far as golf carts go, got a lot of emails, a lot of calls.
What?
Uh, we just needed time, uh, we didn't have another meeting for today, or it would have been done before today, so thank you all for being patient with us somewhat, and, uh, thank you all for putting your confidence in us to do the best job that we can, and, uh, we'll, we'll continue to, to listen to you and try to make the tough decision.
When will this start?
This is not the time for that. Councilmember comments? No other comments, we'll adjourn this meeting.
Want to have the new logo?
If I recognized it when I got in here. Uh, would everybody look at the new logo behind? Y'all been staring at it all night, all I see is a bright blue clock because of Councilmember Canadians. Uh, it's beautiful, I'm glad we got it updated, uh, the design team did a great job, it's on all my papers, so that works out, so. Uh, it's on all my papers, so that works out. So. Uh, no other questions, no other comments. We will adjourn at six oh nine. Thank you all very much.